I call to order this work session of the Morrisville Town Council. We have three discussion items tonight: public transportation study, request to speak protocol demonstration, and town council roundtable. We'll start now with item 2A, public transportation study, and I'm going to pass it to Ben Howell, transportation planner, to get us started.
Mr. Powell.
He just... Okay. So he'll be right back. We're very glad to have with us tonight the members of the planning and zoning board this work session together. We're going to look at transit options moving forward for the town. We're going to be doing a tabletop demonstration, and we're going to be helped by some consultants. So here is Benjamin Howell to lead the discussion.
All right. Great. I won't be up here for long, but I'm just going to introduce our consultants who are here to talk to you about our public transportation study. We have Bethany Whitaker and Matthew Conover. Both are with Nelson Nygaard. And so with that, I'll let them come on up, and they can introduce themselves a little bit more and run through the presentation.
Thanks, Ben. So as Ben said, my name is Matt Conover. This is Bethany Whitaker. We're with Nelson Nygaard. We're a public transportation consulting firm. We specialize in public transit, and so that's obviously what we're here to talk about tonight. We're very familiar with the area. We just finished up the go-forward plan, working with the Wake County as a whole for the... for Camp of the MPO recently. We've worked with Raleigh, Chapel Hill, Durham, Cary, and all the transit providers locally, so we are very familiar with the region and are glad to be here in Morrisville. So thank you so much for having us this evening. How do I do anything?
There's the mouse right there.
All right. So on tonight's agenda is really focused on a game, but the first thing we're going to do is talk a little bit about what is public transportation, then we'll get into the actual workshop, and then we'll have a brief discussion and wrap up based on what we did at the workshop. So first, what is public transit? And so just quickly, by a show of hands, how many people have ever taken a form of public transportation? Just about everybody. And so maybe just a couple of shout-outs. What is public transportation to you? When you say you've taken it, what form of public transportation did you take?
Bus.
Bus, metro, rain, train, commuter train?
Ferry.
Ferry, all right. And so as part of that, transportation is all of those things and a lot more. It can include walking and biking. It can include Uber, Lyft, taxis, or what we call TNCs, which is just an acronym for Uber and Lyft. Transportation loves its acronyms, so... But when we talk about public transportation, we're talking about a vehicle that moves people, and specifically, in this study, we're looking at everything from those sedans, those Uber, Lyft, taxis, TNCs, all the way up to potentially a bus or anything in between, including vans or what we would call a cutaway, which could be kind of like what the GoCary service operates. So public transportation does a wide range of things. It connects communities. Some people will tell you that public transportation is a social service, and it is for people who can't afford a car. Other people will tell you that public transportation is for people who favor the environment because they care about non-attainment areas, they care about air quality, those types of things. And then even some other people will tell you that public transportation is the same as a utility. It's just like a water main or a street. It's just another form of a public service that exists to better the community. And so many different people have many different thoughts about public transportation and what it is and what it does, and none of them are wrong, but it's finding the right balance to those for each individual community, and that's part of what we're going to do here tonight whenever we play the game. So with that, Bethany will take over and talk a little bit about the game specifically and what we're going to do.
All right. So we're going to... What we're going to do today is break into small groups and do a tabletop exercise. We call this game internally at Nelson Nygaard the Smithville Planning Game, and the idea is it could be anywhere. And what we try to do with this game is two things. One is hear from you and get some direct ideas from you about where you think transit services, public transportation, should be and where it should go in your community. The other piece, and it's a really important piece, is about the education. So I think like almost a lot of decisions that we make, you can do... You need to be explicit about what you're trying to accomplish, and then put your resources and your effort behind those things that you're trying to accomplish. The same is true with public transportation. Do you want to get people to work? Do you want to get people to school? Do you want people to have access to shopping? Do you want them to be able to get to medical centers? Do you care about vets? Do you care about economic development? Public transportation can do all of those things. It can do... But tends not to be able to do all of them well, especially in a small-town environment like Morrisville. So what we are asking you to do is make some of those choices together, and we're going to give you some resources and give you some ideas about how to do that. When you break out into the table, there's going to be a map like this, which is Morrisville, and we have some strings, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about what the strings mean, and you can affix those strings. You can put them right on the map in ways and places where you want public transportation to go, or where you think it's best used for your community. So you're going to have to work together to do this, and we hope that you have some good dialogue and debate, and somebody might really care about people with disabilities, and somebody else might really care, you know, about getting people to work for nine-to-five type jobs. And so those trade-offs are yours to make. There's no right or wrong answer. It's really about where you want to invest your resources and use your opportunity to serve your community. So that's sort of the big picture of how this works. We try to make it as simple as possible. Sometimes people call this transit planning with your friends, so I hope that that's the kind of experience that you have. But also, the more debate and contention you have, I think the more you'll understand what it's like for people who are trying to design the services to meet a bunch of different needs, and that always... might not always go together well. So one of the first things about public transportation is we call it span, but it's about time when it operates. And we have... Public transportation tends to do really well... The peak period for travel is during like six to nine or four to seven in the mornings where most people commute, so it's traditional nine-to-five, eight-to-four type of jobs. There's also demand in the middle of the day. That's... We call that off-peak in transportation. A lot of times, that's when people go shopping, they go to appointments, people who don't have regular jobs, older adults, people with disabilities who might be going to appointments or treatments, or people who have... Who need to get to classes during the middle of the day, they travel during the off-peak. So we're talking in this game about a full day being from around 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Don't get too worried about the start time and the finish time, but sort of a 12-hour day, or you can break it into a peak-period service, which is a six-hour day. So that's some of the choices that you're going to be making, and the colors of the strings that you have at your table reflect those two choices, and I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that. So Matt, put in some really cool little animation, which I'll start the buses while I talk to you. So there's three colors of the strings. There's red, which you can see here on my map. It's a short string, which you'll see when you get to your table. It was a three miles?
Three miles.
Three miles of service, and it is for 15-minute service. So that means a bus comes every 15 minutes. The blue strings are for six miles, and that bus will come every 30 minutes, and then the green strings go 12 miles and they come every hour. So I think you can start to see the pattern. If you are traveling, covering more streets and going to more places, you tend to be able to come less often, and that's a fine trade-off. There's no right or wrong answer, but those are the two. That's the tension. If you're going to serve something, each string is one bus, and that's as far as the bus can travel in that time. So if it's going back and forth on a short distance, it can come really frequently. If you want to send it on a longer distance, it's going to be slower and come less often. So I just explained this a little bit. So we have the strings that you'll see red. As I mentioned, 15 minutes. You only have one small, short string for three miles, and that can only... This represents one bus, and it can operate during the peak periods only. And then blue, we have a dark blue and a light blue. One's for peak period, one's for all-day. Green, same... Light green is for peak period only, and darker green is for all-day service. And then we have some orange, like squares, and those are can be for demand-response service. And demand-response service is the kind of service that you make a reservation. So you call in advance, you say, "I'd like to be picked up tomorrow at 10:00, and I want to go to Wegmans, and then I would like to be picked up at Wegmans at 11:00 and brought back to my house." And the people will schedule that service. So it's demand-response. It's flexible, but it serves fewer people. So those are the resources that we're going to give you, and we're going to give you guys plenty of time to work together and talk about how you want to invest that service. So as you are... As you get these resources and you sit down and talk to your colleagues, a couple of things about transit planning that I just want to tell you a little bit about, sort of from the professional toolkit. There's two kinds of... We tend to characterize public transportation in two ways. One is service that provides coverage, and so like if you're thinking about peanut butters, where you spread it thinly over the whole piece of bread, everybody gets a little bit. Service tends to be less frequent and less direct, but you're traveling on every street. So you can imagine who might like that type of service. Somebody who doesn't want to walk very far, so maybe an older person or a younger person, or somebody that has a lot... Does carrying bags or has mobility issues. And then sort of the opposite end of the spectrum is the frequency where you stay on one street and you go back and forth on that street. So people have to walk to that street, and they have to walk from that street in order to get to the bus. So this is... This is one of the main trade-offs that we consider when we're designing transit service. The other thing is to think about where people want to go in Morrisville. Where are the shopping centers? Where are the schools? Where are the jobs? Where are other transportation resources that people might want to connect to? You can put your buses to connect to and from those places. And then finally, this is some data from the... I think it's from the regional travel model?
This is from the census.
From the census, okay. And it tells us where people are traveling from, origins and destinations, and these show some of the major patterns in Morrisville. So it's just for your reference, something to think about when you're starting to go through the planning exercise. And I think that's all the instructions that we wanted to... Oh, propensity. So these are the maps, and actually, this data is on your map that you're going to be looking at. And so the number-one thing that tells us where we should put transit is population employment density. So where are the most people? And where are the most jobs? That's going to be your biggest market for transit service. But we also need to think about things like people's demographic characteristics. So people that have lower incomes, people who are older adults, people with disabilities, people who only have one or no car in their households, they're also going to be more likely to want to have access to transit. So this map combines all that information, where you see the brighter colors, the reds and the oranges and the yellows, those are... That's where there's more demand. Blue is less demand. So that's kind of the high-level overview. And we do want to spend most of this time, we want you guys to be playing the game, so to speak, and... But I will take, if anybody has any questions at this moment, we can take a couple, and then we'll break up into small groups and work together. So yes?
So if you're wondering about the self-control origin and destination, what are the goals of jobs? How do we know?
Yeah. This data doesn't tell you what's behind the red. Is it because it's Wake Tech, or is it because there's a large employer there or a shopping center? You might have that information because you know the community really well, and you can look at the map and say, "Oh, that's where..." And there are... On the maps that you get, there are some destinations shown, so you will get some clues. And... But you're right, that data is composite, so it could be... And one red spot could reflect employment, another one could be a shopping center, and another one could be senior housing or something.
And the thing with public transit planning is there's really no right and wrong answers, so we do want you guys to use your judgment. You are familiar with the community, obviously, and so if you feel that it's appropriate, then go ahead and put it on the map, and then we can have a conversation around why you did what you did. And as another part of it... What else was I going to say? It's gone now, whatever it was, but all the instructions and the colors, there are instruction sheets, so you don't have to memorize all that stuff. I know it was a lot of information, but it is listed.
Yeah. Go ahead, sir.
Is that where we're getting any more information? The reason I'm asking that is, you said $500,000, so how does that quantify into, is it one bus, two bus, three bus?
So what we're going to do is, we gave you some resources at the table right now, and that is more than $500,000 worth of resources. We're going to let you play and put those out and see what you want to do, and then we're going to come around after about 15 or 20 minutes and take away the resources in so that you only have $500,000 to work for. So you get a chance to sort of see, if you could do everything, what would you do? But then we'll say, "Okay, the real world's... It's time for the real world, and we got to take away some of those resources." Yeah?
We have the luxury to extend it to 9:00 PM? Because I don't think 6:00 PM is realistic.
So in reality, of course, you do, but for this game, we're just talking about 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And so we're asking you to kind of stick within that parameter, but you could, you know, when you make your final recommendation, you can write that down and say, "You want to serve this street, but you want to go to 9:00 PM." So that will give us the information. It'll be a little bit off sort of the game, but I think that you telling us that is really important.
Okay. The other question I had was, on the map, do we know where are the jump-off locations to, let's say, Cary's transportation plan or Triangle Transit Transportation Plan, so that we can think about, you know, drop-off and, you know, basically changing buses or things of that nature?
Right. So it shows the Regional Transit Center, RTP. You can't really see it in this map, it's too big, but in the map that you're going to get at your table, it's clearly marked, and you will get that. But it only shows Morrisville. We don't have parking rides yet on this, but you could also... You will have pens, and if you want to take your string and put it and say, "To Cary," you could do that.
Because that's another consideration, too, if you want to spend your dollars outside of the community boundary, too. So I think that that's all kind of getting ahead of the game, but things that will have to be discussed at the table. And I do encourage you, like, use your cellphones, use whatever information you have to look at it, because there are real geographic boundaries, obviously, here in the community. You have the railroad that runs right through the town, and so you can only cross that in a few select points. And so all that needs to be considered whenever you actually lay these lines out on the map. So do consider real geography, do look at your phones to pull in any other additional information that you think is relevant to help build a strong transit network.
But I will say, for this exercise, you have to keep your strings on existing roads. So we just have... We spent the last hour or so talking to people, and one of the comments we got was, "Oh, there's a new road," or "We're building a road there." For this exercise and this purposes, we can only use what we have on the map. So...
Helicopter.
Right. Yeah. You can't go through, you know, whatever park or where there's no roads.
Okay. So that was my question. Are we building this for tomorrow, or are we building it for like 2025?
So you...
Building it without that knowledge?
Right.
The roads?
So I think you are... We want you to build it for tomorrow, for 2025, but with the constraints of the map that you have. All right. So one more? Go ahead.
So we're working inside the vacuum of Morrisville?
Correct. Right.
So we can't leverage money with others?
Um, not for this exercise, but again, I think if you... If there's something that you really want to do, you know, plan, go ahead, put your strings on the map, play around with your part, you know, at your tabletop, and then just go ahead and list the other things that you really wish that you could have done or that you want to do, because that... It would be useful.
Can we pull information from outside, as you indicated, about ridership, what we think people will ride or not? That's the biggest problem, right? Getting people out of their cars.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. You should design a service that you think reflects what you want, and if ridership is important, then you should focus on that type of service, like the coverage versus the rides. But I don't know if this is what you were getting at either, but GoCary will eventually serve Park West. They're going to come up the Western Parkway route. That is next year, potentially, that soon. So if you want to consider that that's there, and you want to say, "We're going to have a transfer point here," that's absolutely appropriate to do in this game.
Right. And you know there's a lot more service going to the Regional Transit Center as well, and Cary is also getting a lot more service. So yeah. All right. So I think what we want to do is have... Oh, did somebody have one more question?
I guess, are you going to be taking questions about the transit study process in general? Because my question isn't really about the exercise, but I just had a comment and a question. Would you prefer that at the end?
Yes. Let's talk about that at the end. So why don't we... What we want... Oh, go ahead. Ben's got some.
All right. If we can, we're going to have you all count off, one, two, three. Councilmember Schlink, if you'll start and go to Rob.
One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. All right.
Ones will be back at this table in front of the doors. Twos will be back at the table by Courtney, and then threes will be at the center table.
All right. I didn't look at that stuff.
And then on each of the tables, there will be a map for everybody, but just you... You can write and draw on the spare maps, but just use one map to actually plot out all the strings and everything.
And then I just put a... We just put a slide up that has a few more tips for you guys as well. All right.
So what's up with... We'll get into the three. I'm surprised. You cannot... You cannot model like the representative bus. You can't. 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 You can't.[1308.16] No, well, they would do that. Rich. So I said, which way am I outstripping us? So if you did it, it's the one plus B. The bus will go to A, so it's going to have. By the way, from here, sixty. It's really true. And that's like, we just create. Yes. If you want to trade in your. You want to do that, so. You said you went for five, that's. But you would be the one. So we. And you want to try to do what you're doing. So is that true? A very. Here, lighter and hot. Like you started in. So I don't think we're getting those. You can get more. But you can give me. We just won't be. Yeah. Circle. Exactly. We could, you know, you want to get all red, we can manipulate how. Or. Yeah. All the. But. Way. So.
My.
Okay, they're. For us. So we. What's the trouble? What's the issue? Do you understand? I look high powered. What was the thing? Just. Really. I think. Okay, definitely something. Things. That's. This thing. You're just not. We do more than. You're. Somebody's. You can be there. You want to. You. Do a design. And. So she likes to try. They are. I. So. People are wearing. One. Our. Sorry. It's. It's. And. And this is reported. So. So. Let's take one of them. At first. Certain. I'm going to. There is. And just. It was. Well, she's. To. My. We. Right. Who's there? Is. So. We have something that still I ask these. I don't know. So that there's somebody. Yeah. I feel like that's. Well. Yeah. Um. I'm. I'm. Stop with. So. So later. I thought it's. We don't even.
We. Can't. Got to.
Where. This is something. Stops.
Doesn't matter now.
But that's. So. So. That's like a waste of that. If. And this is very. He was. First. And probably. You know, that makes sense. You know. Yeah. Because. What if. This is. I changed. Right. One of them. Those. Probably. But. Yeah. I was. I was. You know what I can say a hundred. Because. I mean. And so in those areas, I mean, that's. If you want to have fifteen, fifteen. Just highly through those. People. Do you want to take on two, have two. That's fifteen. You know. More. I don't. Exactly. It's. Yeah. I would think. Thirty minutes. It's. Trans. Like. I know. I was. Better. I don't. So. This is. This was not, we don't. All. But. That's. I know. She's. So. So this is. So this is. This is. Or. It's like. Not just. Really. Where. Where. Just something. How. Do. This. This. From. People. This. It's something. It's. You know.
No, that's good. No, that's.
It's. I. Lower. It's. You were. Some. Because. I'm. Did this. So. This certainly being up is nothing like. My. It's. That was. Yeah. And. I think this is. I don't know. So in this. Then. This is kind of. This is. Some. You. You know. I thought. Sorry. Yeah. You know. Turn the seat down, so you might have. So you're running thirty, thirty minutes. If you're doing half as a morning, now we're done. All. Because you have. An hour. Then. Rouse. You'd run this plus. But I do have more than you. That wasn't. You don't. You got. In the bus. Fire. Singing. All. I have. Didn't want. And. You come this day. I do. Says.
I think you're right. They're really.
I'm.
Would you say?
Yeah.
I'll be.
See.
I was. It's. Think.
Was it. And. I think. So. She. Yes. No, that's. I just. Why? That's true. I think. Get. And. You.
You're.
Yes. As. You're. Yeah.
You. You know what's. You.
I don't. It's. This.
Over time. Because. Except. Pretty much.
There's a lot of. What? He's. Of course.
Well. I didn't know there are. But.
It's. Two.
I think.
It's. Definitely. Right. That. This is.
I'm getting nervous.
It's. So. I'm saying. I can't. Actually. Thing is. Does. Percy's. So. He. What he said. Well. He's.
Yeah, yeah, no.
You're driving mine. You had any. Nobody. I don't. I'm. Okay. It's. Yeah. So that's. I thought. You know. They have a. Why? Really much. I hope. I'm. You. I don't know. Well, that was. You. I was just. But. Yes. You better. It's. We're making some. This would. If you do. And. This. You want. It's. It's. All. You. I just. America. Whatever. I guess we are. That. We should.
I'm.
So. Just right now. It's a bit. Nine pounds. I mean, these can be not good at all. I don't.
But people like. Right.
It's so red. It's hard. Anyone. That's. Maybe. Back. They have. Five. Because they're going to be. Yeah.
They're my. I live.
You. I can. You. We. I guess. It's. Probably fine.
Yeah. When. Will. I.
Here. One. You.
Giving.
Part. Yeah. That makes sense. So that one. It's so easy. That's how I was thinking. And. In. So. That. Now. Yes. Try. No. But this. I mean, like, for example, I think they keep. I'll. This. We. What. Do you? Do you want to? You. I. You.
They look. Right.
You.
Well, they're. You might also.
Anything. You can. You want. Basically.
They're really.
I would. If. I. I'm. You can. Now. He's. To. Operate as well. Because he hits. Maybe. We. I don't think. Same. That's. Okay. That. Useful. We can. Out.
They're breaking.
And it's just going to tell a tale. You don't want to. Wear. It's.
We.
Oh.
That's.
But then you got. You still have a little. Especially. Everybody. Also. Really. Were you. That.
Our.
Yeah.
So.
But. Doesn't. Just.
We power.
We're going to use all these. Right. Sure.
There.
So. So.
Most.
I mean. We're. How. And. That was. Here. And do what you said. You could. But they have. Or. If you're. Go. Yeah. So you're still.
My.
You do. Home. You're waiting. So. You're. You call. And then you come back. You. Start. Well. I. I think. Here. You're. What is. You're going down. That way. Or. Over. The. What. If you're. More. It's. Time is all.
We. So.
Well, you can do that. You double it over that one, then you would have. Oh, okay. Then you would have thirty minutes into the evening, sixty minutes. Even. Thirty. Six. You do one. Just. Make. Um. Right now. Yeah. For. Well. And this. For. I'm. So. So. Somebody. We. Well, again. How. You can. And. They don't have. But you. They. For. We saw. For. Yeah. Do you have. He's. Is. That's. And. So. Was that. Which one? One. That. Seven. That.
Yeah.
And. And. Our. Yes. Well, that's. They're doing same thing. Yeah.
No, no, no. I was going to say. I'll keep. Yes. I'm. Yeah. It's. Okay. Gone.
Where's. That's.
I know. It's a beach. Yes. Alright. So you guys.
They.
So now. I'm. Going to do again. And. You can pick what. Use. Grab. You want. Should we need to have.
Well, that's.
On.
Yeah, that's.
Because. So. We want to. One of these. This is the money.
So. I got.
So.
Everything. I.
This. Or has. Those.
It's. I mean. That's. Exactly. So. We. Same. May or not. Please. Okay. Question. Because. I mean. What. That. See, that's what you aspire to. Tell you. And. I.
Yeah.
Well. I want. Because. You do. But not.
On the side. Okay. I see. Money. You want.
Change. Yeah. I. I. There. There. I. Full. I was. Shower. Now. It's. Twenty twenty. Final. In. The. Freak. I. It's. I don't. It's. You don't know. You don't talk. But. Still. Still. So. I was. I. I do. I. We. It's. Right. We. You. I. Also. They. Or. It's. A. I. And. I. I. Oh.
Council members and PZB members. Groups one, two, and three. Bad news. The town manager has just looked and she's decided that she needs to constrain your budget. So you are getting ready to have some of your strings taken away.
So. Was it something. You have. My. But. I mean. We. Everything. Everything. Basically. There's. There's. Sports. The. Trolley cars. And. And.
You. Um. Four. Us is about four. About. The small.
Uh. Actually.
So. So.
Uh. So. Now. They. All that light rail. There was. Also. No. It's. Build. I mean.
And. These are.
This is like. I.
You have.
I'll take. Just now. Size of the. It's all trail. It's like, but you know, there's. Nail trap. In addition to.
I think.
To Seattle. So. And. Who are the trains? Two minutes.
About fifty minutes.
I'll try. I'll. I. I. I.
About fifty minutes.
I'll try. I'll. I. 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 And. I. 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 Charge is not quite.
No, no. I see all the.
Well, this is what the light rail is. We're. We. But. Well, this is what the light rail is. We're.
So he is. So he is.
You don't make these. Building against. Making talks. My.
She didn't talk.
I just. For this.
Four, two, three minutes.
So they. You have.
So he has. I want. He's another.
I. 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 I.
So you can get. So these are. Your. You.
We're. We're. Walking by houses. So you. And. And. The. The. And. 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 The. The. Then. I don't. That's.
That means. You travel down. And then.
I. 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 Yeah.
Oh, you're. You're.
You have to. You got. So. I don't. You can say. We have something that they have.
So you can get.
Something. We stop here. But.
Sometimes. All the issues. As long as we are. You know, the. Government. Whereas. When you. That's really. Yeah.
As. We have. There's no reason. I'll play. I'll. 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 And. Then. I. I. Especially. Reality. This is. We can do the same thing. So. This. Thanks. So. So. We were saying. Some. For. Same. Yeah, it's what you did. Yeah. Around. Oh. Yeah. Oh, that's. I'd say. Where you have. You. And like. You.
Playing.
Why? Because that would be a better. That would be people have this. Sure. Assuming. Here. But. They want to go. If you're saying that. It is. It is very interesting. The. The. Yes. No. Yeah. 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 We got. We got. I think there's.
You guys. You need to tell you.
Also. You. 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 You just have. You just have. You. 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 Yeah. 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 You. 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 You wanted to have. You. So. You. 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 No. You. You. I have five. Yes. Don't pull and bust. The. No. That's. You. And. No, go stop there. Great. So. Yes. You. Yeah. We don't. We. Well, why would we want to connect? I think.
Um, no.
I was. Yeah. 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 And people would just walk here by. They're. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
So one thing you can. Sorry. I think. Oh. Yeah. I. Question. You. In other words, people. No, but this comes. My. I. Yeah.
Yeah. Because. No. Yeah. 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 No. Yeah. 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 Um, yeah. Yeah. You. You. Yes. Be company. It's. Slide.
Yeah. Yeah, we can get that. No, yes. Um, I. I can use the. 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 Yeah.
Better. Saves walking.
Yeah.
Hard. That's. No. That's why. We have to find. I think.
Texting.
Sorry. Sorry. That's. That's. So. 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 That's my problem. So like. I don't. I. So. Like. So like. I don't. I. So. It's. So. It's. 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 So. 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 It's. It's. But that. I. You're. I. I. Find a way. Sure.
Yeah. But this is. I'm. I was. About five minutes. And then you want to. So.
Yeah. 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 This is. This is. We're. Here. Yeah. 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 So. This one is. Anyone? Yeah. 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 But. It's. I. And. And. And.
So. You know. You.
Just. Just. I. I. I.
You can. Um. Number. Four minutes. That's. I. I. Every fifteen minutes. Down. Three. Yeah. Yeah.
But. I'll sing the song. Um. I said. Yeah. There's. That's. Um. You know. The. 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 I. And. It's. I. I. And. It's. I. She. Yeah. So. Yeah. But. The. 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 We. Now. So. I. 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 How? Three. Yeah. So.
He just. Character. Question. What? What?
Questions. Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. 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 Um. But. Here. Yeah. Yeah. But. Um. Here. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
All right, everyone, time to finish up. Matt, you got those guys? All right. Time to, the time to play the game is now over. And so, yeah, group two, you want to send your, so what we're going to do now is I'm going to have each group come up and tell us, first show the unconstrained map. So how you, where you put your buses, when you didn't have any limitations on how much bus service you could use. So tell us what you did and why you did it. And then the same two questions for the constrained option. And I think if we're going to be able to put it right here on this screen, it's going to project so you, everybody can see your maps. So again, um, so we're going to do two first and then three and then one, you're going to go last. Last is first, first is last. And then, so, yeah. So you can talk right in.
All right. Look at that. So cool. Very awesome. Okay, it's upside down.
Is it?
It's right inside out.
Not upside down. I'll let her.
All right. Um, for us, we took thirty minutes.
We took a, um, we took a strategic decision because we feel Mooresville has a lot of congestion in the mornings and the evenings. So instead of having all day service for this round, we thought we would do the peak time only. And this is a representation of that route.
And, and the idea behind say route, okay, like this route is basically connecting between two regional centers. Like we know Park West has, already has a bus service coming in and the regional is good. So that bill pretty much pull all the people who have to go to, uh, can take additional routes going from either Park West or, uh, the regional and, uh, the Swan. Let me show what is behind this. It kind of goes to the perimeter, which is high, um, employment, um, places.
Right, so we added two on-demand bus services that would also add additional flexibility to ridership.
And the Wake Tech perimeter and then it will connect between these two routes, uh, needed to at, at this particular intersection.
Park being a climate center and the second one would be the Grace Park.
Yeah, Grace Park to, uh, Cedar Fork and the Town Hall because Courtney wanted, uh.
[laughing]
To come home, you know, like I'm from.
But it's more like the town center. So we wanted the town center to have, um, on-demand.
And this is basically taking a different route going through Davis, Kits Creek, uh, go, uh, coming down to Bentley Village, Marshall Parkway and then somewhere terminating around this place. Um, idea is to cover the entire town. Um, we believe, right, um, even though philosophically people say it's high demand at the place of employment, we wanted to give it an opportunity that it goes to some residential and carries some of the people around towards, um, the regional transit area or the places of importance in our town.
Okay, and with $500,000, we felt that was a good start.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want to just spend a minute talking about this map as well? This is your unconstrained map?
That's Utopia.
Okay, so what does Utopia do and what does it accomplish?
So I forgot, what is this color for?
That's thirty minutes.
Oh, okay, thirty, exactly, thirty minutes is again, um, the idea is to connect, uh, between two regional, uh, that logic doesn't go away, uh, because if we connect those areas, then it basically helps the rest of the other connections. And, uh, this one is, uh.
The dark green is sixty minute all day.
Also sixty minute all day. So basically finding an alternative route going to, um, the regional again and, but, uh, it's going to high employment and then a lot of the townships and connecting, uh, Bethany Village and other places where, uh, high shopping complexes, uh, Park West and coming back terminating at, uh, Western Parkway where some of the employment is also located.
And also where Go Carry would pick up.
Yes, yeah. And, uh, this one is, I don't know why you did this one, but it's, uh, but, you know.
We thought it was, is a.
It's just like a connector is a fifteen, but idea is the same as the one before is, uh, connecting two routes in the middle. So with, uh, using on-demand, if you look at this, the high, the principal idea of these two are the same so that both the routes are connected and has a maximum coverage at the high, uh, population density areas.
Okay, excellent. So what are, um, some things that you guys talked about? Like if there was one main issue or concern that you were debating when you're doing this, what was, what would you say that would be?
The, I think the main that we talked about is, um, should we go for high frequency or use a route that basically can pull and get more people as part of the thing? That was a fundamental, um, decision that we took once we said like, uh, thirty minutes is good enough, let's get more people into that, the routes, and that's how we started going around the routes.
Right, we want to get more people into the system and so we could expand it over time.
Good. Okay, excellent, thank you very much. All right, so group three.
So we can do the. Strain first.
Yeah. You, you could do whatever you. Maybe constrain first. It's supposed to be unconstrained first.
Okay. Well, I'm sure. So.
All right.
Is that right? Is that, yeah, okay.
So what have you, choices did you guys make?
So we were trying to sort of do a loop. Um, that's kind of what we started on is, hey, let's do like a loop that would be able to go around. We ended up, you know, thinking, all right, then we can do maybe, because the, the high frequency is so short, I mean, basically we were thinking that would be a good way to maybe go up and downtown hall, uh, and maybe cut over to Wake Tech, the sort of almost be like a spine, thinking that once, if the downtown area sort of takes off, you know, as well as kind of going by the Transitory and Development, it would connect those two as well as go on up to, you know, again, into like, why Wake Tech? Uh, and then trying to go as far as we could into RTP, uh, with some, you know, daily and hourly, uh, peak hour service, you know, as well. And then we sort of, at, at the end, we were kind of throwing things, you know, we have this one little string and I think we could possibly get this up to RTP, uh, into RDU if we wanted to or, you know, the other thing we, you know, we didn't really consider is going to the Regional Transit Center with this, but I think with this one route, you could probably do that if you had to. Uh, but you do have a lot of duplication of service and it's really concentrated on these sort of main thoroughfares which are crowded with cars. So there wasn't any great really way of doing it anyway. Um, and of course, over here, trying to pick up these two neighborhoods with the, the on-demand service.
Great. Thank you.
And so in the constrained, um, we ended up kind of doing a totally different thing. Instead of a loop, you know, the other thing we realized is, of course, with the whole situation with, uh, no connection between fifty-four and church, you know, we can't really run a bus like we'd love to do up fifty-four and then come back to go anywhere into RTP because you're on the other side of the tracks. Um, so we ended up doing these two sort of hub and spokes almost, um, one going to the Regional Transit Center, coming all the way down, trying to pick up Park West, tying into the carry, everything else. Um, same thing down at Mooresville Market, um, and maybe there'd be some alternative or connection in this area here, people could jump between the two and then run it up across Kits Creek into the edge of RTP. Um, but it was a lot harder, obviously, with the constrained.
And, and then you assigned your, our demand response, on-demand?
Well, just again, trying to pick up the neighborhood over here like Breckenridge and then also in the sort of center, because we kind of ignored Town Hall, this whole section, you know, put on-demand service there possibly to pick people up and take them if they didn't feel like they could really walk to those two different, um, lines.
And then what were the main trade-offs that your group discussed?
Well, we, uh, you know, you realize just how much of an issue we've got, you know, with the railroad and the connection, it even will affect buses, um, and then, you know, just trying to spread the service as far as we could and, and be able to have it somewhat viable. I mean, thinking maybe that, you know, possibly in the middle of the day, people Uber or whatever Lyft could potentially fill that need for somebody that has to leave in the middle of the day, you know, but it's still, you know, it's a, it's a bad compromise, but it's a compromise. I mean, that's, yeah.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right, group one. You guys want to come up?
Okay.
You want the?
Unconstrained first. Okay.
So the, the main issues that we talked about as we looked at the unconstricted is a focus, um, for our transit strategy on, um, focusing. for our transit strategy on focusing on our citizens who are commuting to work to our major employment centers, which will be in the upper-left, the resource triangle park. Many company, many of our citizens work at Cisco, Credit Suisse, NetApp. And so we wanted to really focus on offering service for those residents who often are working at different shifts or different hours. So even doing peak times, but having more bus service that could take traffic off the road. The second thing that we talked about is that, which is a unique opportunity for Morrisville is over 35% of our population is Asian Indian. And like Councilmember Garmela, they grew up in cities of 20 to 30 million. And so they're more used to using transit. And many of them are in the tech workforce. So I'm going to hand it over to Sanjay to walk through some of our ideas on the unconstrained.
Sure. So let me just highlight a few things here before we drop off, right? So the reason why we chose the Cisco and that area was, you know, number one, most of the, there is a high density of companies where it's not one building, but Cisco has about four or five of them, and they are spread out. And so many people kind of hop out and take their cars to go to the other places. What we can show is if we can use that bus system here every 15 minutes and do a proof of concept that basically says if we have some transportation available, people will use it, and given that there is availability and, more importantly, usage of it going all the way back to the McCrimmon Commons area, right? So we can demonstrate that the residents of... Sorry, Breckenridge, I'm looking at Satish. Satish will kind of take the bus to work rather than drive his big SUV to work, right? So we are trying to eliminate that. And these routes, as we have seen, we have tried to provide coverage and at the same time, with different frequencies, also kind of minimize having to wait for an hour for the bus to come by as opposed to every 15 minutes, right? That was what we were trying to achieve there.
Okay.
With the constrained one, same concept. We wanted to demonstrate the value of public system in a manner that it will be available for folks to use within the town boundaries, if you will, and actually use it, right? As opposed to somewhere else that we may or may not be able to use it, right? So this way, even though it is available every 15 minutes, maybe during the peak hours it is not as frequently used, but we believe that having it there demonstrates that the town is committed to it. And during off-peak hours, you will actually see usage from Morrisville Market to Bethany Park, back to Morrisville Commons and around there. And from other areas, people can just hop in and use their own buses or use their own cars.
Yeah, excellent. And then you put your on-demand services just at that?
Yeah, just on the outskirts so that people can use them to commute within those densely populated areas.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, yeah, no, you guys all did a great job. So thank you very much for participating. But I do want to just point out a couple of things. One is, Group Three and Group Two had very similar maps. Can you put this back on? So this, this map, connection to RTC, connection to Park West, so connecting to the regional network and the rest of the Wake Transit Plan, also touching RTP, and then also coming down to some of the shopping. So this network is very similar to this one. It's drawn a little bit differently, but you have the same sort of main connecting points and the same objective where you're operating during the off-peak, during the peak hours only, and you're connecting to the major points in Morrisville, within Morrisville. So it provides circulation, provides connection to these other regional transit, regional employment, and some of the local shopping. So I think that those are really, those are interesting ideas. I think they're, they look different, but they're basically very, very similar in concept and what their goals are. And then we have something that's really different, but also an interesting approach, which is let's just pick one segment and do a really good job with it and connect housing and shopping and other services. And do it, and, you know, every 15 minutes. So high-value, high-frequency service, but you cover just a much smaller area. So I think it's really interesting, the way that you guys came back to your sort of constrained, you know, the constrained networks and what your choices really are. And as mentioned, these are all about $500,000, or probably a little bit more than $500,000, depending on how we price and do the service on the demand, the on-demand services. But did anybody have any questions or any other points that they wanted to make?
So I mean, we were talking here about, you know, when you look at bus services, right? You kind of get pigeonholed into that piece. But we have not talked about how making rent-a-bicycle, rent-a... Those kinds of services which can be leveraged within smaller areas.
Yes.
You know, have those on-demand services to provide healthy options too, right?
Right.
Maybe that can buy you more bicycles than by the bus.
Yeah, no, I think that that's true, and that's not, we didn't include that in the game, but you're absolutely right, that we want to think about other modes or other options, transportation options that pair, that go well with bus service, like bikes, like sidewalks, pedestrian crosswalks, you know, electric bikes, for example, could be something that could really increase the usefulness of a system like this. So people could ride their bikes, park them, and then get their groceries and go back, yeah. No, I think that that, ultimately, your transportation answer is going to be some combination of things. Some people will drive sometimes, take the bus sometimes, bike or walk sometimes. Any other comments or observations that people had? I know, they cheated. They were really well behaved, so we gave them extra. Yeah, go ahead.
It's not in this extent, but are you, if you're more of a representative, are you going to see how much ridership Morrisville is going to pick up? So that's going to be determined, really, how much demand is there initially?
Right, so we, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, we're going to do what we call a cost-benefit analysis, and ridership will be a part of that. So we'll look at things like how many jobs are within a quarter-mile buffer of whatever service we propose? How many residents are within a quarter-mile buffer of whatever we, you know, propose? And what are the costs of the miles and hours that we've laid out? And then come up with a matrix or a pretty quick graph to show you that under these, under this option, here's kind of the cost-benefit shakeout, and under this one, here's the cost-benefit shakeout. Because you could see a lot of focus, why this one did focus more on what I would say ridership anyway, with the mainly focusing on the 15-minute service. Almost all of them were peak hour only, so that's definitely a ridership focus. But then a lot of them were more 30-minute or 60-minute services, which is less ridership focus. So there was definitely an overall effort, I think, among all the groups to try to put more lines on the map to show more geographic coverage. So it will be a balance, and that cost-benefit, I think, really helps speak to that, so.
One of the things that might be also a lot of, you know, most of, among our employers, when we look at them, even though they are in the Morrisville area, but most of the people who come here are not, they don't live in Morrisville, right? So the biggest question was, okay, I have those transportation hubs there, where we could jump off and come in. But if I'm already driving up to that point, why would I not drive all the way to my goal, right? What is stopping me from going up there? So in other words, to your right, we struggle with that question is, what is the value of the bus service? If I'm, you know, if I just stop at the borders, assuming that, you know, that has to be a premium for me not to use my bus, my car, all the way to work?
Right, and in fact, we had a, like, a little open house before this meeting, and some members of the public came by and they told us different things. And one of the commuters said that it takes him 20 minutes to get to I-40, and then once he gets to I-40, so that's like, you know, two miles, three miles or something like that because it's single-lane roads and he's got to, you know, there's some choke points. Once he gets on the interstate, he's in downtown Raleigh in 15 minutes. So that's exactly speaks to your point. Why would he drive to get on a bus with, once he gets to I-40 or to a park-and-ride by I-40, it's an easy commute? That was what he said, right? And so I think that that, some of that thinking is really what, and also it's illustrated in some of these trade-offs, where some people are connecting to the Regional Transit Center, and it could be that people from other communities take the bus. You know, somebody from Durham comes into the Regional Transit Center and then gets on a local bus to get to a job or service or to Wake Tech in Morrisville. So, but, yeah, I think there's lots of different ways to look at it and think about it.
But it can be a hard pitch. I mean, at the end of the day, you're asking somebody to make a choice. And if they already have a car, if they're already doing it every day, that's, there has to be, as you say, some kind of added value. What's the value add to convince me to get out of my car? And sometimes there just isn't one. But sometimes it's, I can read a book, I can do something else, but not always.
I think we were kind of, Liz was mentioning, maybe as time goes on, maybe people would say, hey, let's, Morrisville's got good transportation, I live near here, maybe I'll buy my next house in Morrisville. You know, so it's possible that maybe if you did it right, you could gradually, it wouldn't happen overnight, but change people's patterns of where they live, hopefully.
Yeah, I think going back on the course, I guess, in my thought process was not depending on the person able to come to the hub, but the person coming to that hub, you know, by default, goes straight to that place. But it is to be a pattern where, you know, they can mention the Florelli and, you know, or those kind of, they can carry. So the circulators are there. It's, if we are, you know, having a scope for only Morrisville and not for New Corvus, that's, that is wrong because we have to work, very work to make sure that our connections take people from Raleigh downtown, getting them delivered from the left and take that circular inside. And why is it supposed to pull off? Because otherwise, if it is just a circular in the bus, I don't think that's...
That means you have to have timing. You don't want to get off a bus and wait another 20 minutes to get another bus.
Right, yep.
So you need to be ordered at what you need to do.
There's an article where, in other lines, the person, like the woman you get into the bus, it automatically sees where the person is going and how many stops. The person's maybe, it's pretty much like a airport, you know, like transit. If I go from here to Chicago and then to Seattle, they know if you're getting, you know, 100 people who are going to Seattle from Chicago, and they, the thing to wait on the bus to wait, that's what they're doing at that time. That kind of helps to get more people because sometimes they see the bus coming in and the bus leaving out, so they have to wait for the next several seconds.
Right, nothing's more frustrating than watching your bus pull away, yeah.
But that brings the other point is, there are some countries where the route is dynamic based upon how many people are waiting on a particular bus. I don't know if we have even considered those kinds of options. If there are more people at a, you know, bus stop and what says, if they go around, the bus actually changes routes of people that's up before.
Right, that's a different type of bus service. Often what we're talking about is scheduled fixed-route buses so that you can, you can, you should be able to wait at the bus stop and know when it's going to come and pick you up, right? That's sort of the premise of most of the bus services that we design in the United States. But that sort of...
That's why you're expecting a lot too, right?
Yeah.
You are now assuming that on a particular park, there are always going to be people. And you could have, let's say, a 15-minute truck, but there are more people waiting on the 13-minute truck.
So you go get them.
And instead of, you know, while, instead of just going up and down the route where there are more people, why don't you change the route and then to get people?
Right, yeah. No, there's advantages to that, right? And you do see a lot of chit, like chitney, chitney service. Whereas, you know, it's more dynamic, and where the more people are, you can take that bus. But then, most of the service that we talk about is the scheduled fixed-route buses that is reliable, consistent service, and that's kind of what we've been designing. But I did want to, we have about five minutes left, and I know a couple people, you had a question about the bus study overall, and then maybe, Matt, you wanted to just sort of tell people what the next steps are going to be? So, did you have a question?
I think I already mentioned in my comment, my question is, in the extent that demographics make up a town, in fact, our communities are even worse than some of the people in the fact that so many of our population, 33%, is South Asian, most of them Indian. And many of these citizens have lived in larger cities like one of Ohio's. Some of these cities are 20, 30 million, and, you know, they're even more used to using transit. So to a certain extent, I think that gives the town of Morrisville a lot of advantage compared to other cities that surround us. So that was my question as we continue to work with law, with our candidates, and how can we develop a strategy that's bringing that into question? One consistent thing we worked on last year is congestion, people tired of being in those. And I think transit, more people transit, help us take cars off the road if it is done correctly. If there's focus, question becomes having that, having that at the cost.
Right.
If we look at other options, like another device, but partnerships with people that is being given in younger population, a recently reduced number of park complexes. But if you find a younger demographic and have people only using, many millennials actually, they've done studies, they're willing not to give a car.
Right.
So with Morrisville also a strategy developed, including this, actually, a younger demographic, that demographic people are willing to work on, not giving a car. So those are just comments, and it's just something, feedback to you, because of probably factors that you want.
Right, yeah, no, for sure.
Yeah, I think that it's excellent feedback, and it's, we started hearing it as soon as we had the kickoff meeting to the study, especially with, as you say, the Asian population that exists. And we've even heard some things that we don't have data points for, which is that a lot of people will have family members come over and visit them for extended periods of time. And so they may live here for months at a time, and our census data doesn't reflect that information. But those are people who are here, who are used to riding public transit, and don't have a car. Like, if you talk about a market for somebody to get on a bus, that's the market right there. I mean, that's the real sweep-up. So what we understand is that propensity map that you see there in the back is probably understated from what the reality is of what the support of public transportation is, specifically within that Asian community. Now, it is reflective in there. We do have a factor, we call it propensity likelihood to ride transit. And the demographic that identifies as Asian on the census is already at 1.4 times the average person. So we are taking into account some of that because of that experience that a lot of them have had in their other, where they're from, those kind of things, that their familiarity with transit and their likelihood to ride it is being captured to a small extent. But we do absolutely hear what you're saying and are considering that there is an underlying demand that there's just no data point for, but it is definitely something that we're hearing loud and clear, so.
How do you break that one down? So likely, the likelihood to ride, if I break that, likely to recommend, in the new confidence of it, right? And a lot of folks would say, yeah, I'm likely to recommend, or I'm likely to ride. How does that convert protection? And that's a good, where is that, where you can, where you can contribute investment that actually can come to markets? How do you get that?
So there are many things that go into it. This study in particular, Bethany said I would talk a little bit about next steps, and that's part of what our next steps are. So we really take a comprehensive approach that has basically three key elements to it. And one is what we call a market analysis. So what we're looking for is what is the market potential for any type of public transit that we may suggest? And that includes things like that propensity. What we'll do, we actually have purchased with a town, I should say, has purchased cellphone data. And so what we're looking at is origin, destination, not just from old historic data from census, but actually information that happened last month with people, actual movement and travel patterns like that. And we also will look at major trip generators, future development that's known here in the town, to really give us a good depiction of what the market is. And we will balance all that information to try to refine it based on some of those propensity factors, like I was saying. So a zero-vehicle household, that's the number-one thing. If you don't have a vehicle, whether you couldn't afford the vehicle, whether you chose not to have it for environmental reasons or for any other number of reasons that you don't have a vehicle, you're so, you're going to ride an opportunity if it's available to you. So we weight those factors in that market segment. And that's just the data point. So there, we're just looking at information. Then we do things like the survey that's on the town's website right now. We come out here, we talk to individuals, and we get more of that intangible information, that information that helps either support the data that we've found or kind of rub against it. And then so whenever we come into those places that it's rubbing against it, we look for, why is it, why are we hearing something from the community that doesn't match? Oh, it's because we have people traveling from out of country, they live here for several months, we don't have a data point for that. Oh, okay, so now we know how to adjust for that. And then we also look at that cost-benefit in the service to talk about where can we really apply the dollars to see what we'll get based on what we heard people say, what we saw in the market analysis. So it's similar to any market analysis that you would do for any private company. We're just looking at what we think is the market potential out there and weighting that based on those various factors to come up with what we think is the best estimate for the benefit that would be received if that service was provided.
Makes sense. Well, but you sort of break that in terms of, I have a study, if you will, so we get new concept in, in a system of different tracks, or whatever, it's a small segment of, we get that concept there, and then it got, so that.
Yeah. So I think there's a bunch of different things you could do. One is you could, the first principle is to do the design correctly. So I think there was a couple people, there was one group that said, oh, maybe we could just stretch to go to the airport. And we would say, no, don't, you don't stretch it, because if you stretch it, then your bus is going to be late. As soon as it starts to be late, then you lose those passengers who get frustrated because it's not arriving on time, or they're standing at the street corner wondering where their bus is. So I think we need to design it so that's, that it can operate, it can be reliable, and it can be as, as fast and comfortable as possible for the people on the bus. The other things we can do is like making it free. Making it free maybe for a certain period of time, or making it free always. I think that's going to be part of the conversations that we have with Ben, and some of the cost-benefit analysis that Matt's been talking about, and/or doing other incentives, or packaging different programs, so that somebody has, feels like they have choices, and that they have options, and if something goes wrong, they'll still be supported. So those can be things like guaranteed ride home, or if you get a bus pass, you also get a ticket to, you know, participate in bike share, or something like that. We can do some different packages, so that it encourages and rewards people for trying it.
Then the only other thing I would add, even on top of that, is part of our study includes the development of what we call service standards. And so we will come up with a quantifiable way to measure what we define as successful service. And so once the service is actually out on the street, it will be held against those standards, and if it doesn't meet those standards, there will be a remedy for adjustment to that. And so maybe it is try something different, maybe it's move it on a different street, but it has to have a period to mature, so the service standards will allow a little bit of flexibility there to pilot it, as you say. And then, once that time period is up, those service standards kick in, and if the route is not performing to what the expectation is, just like anything that you do whenever you're spending money on it, you adjust it to make sure that you get your value.
Go ahead in the back.
Just to get back on what you said, is, you said initially that you have done more single studies in Florelli, Durham, other places. Like, have you done somewhere outside which is less dense, you know, 30, actually, it's like, not that we are very dense, but the entire area of R and P, that's not more than 1.7, that's just, you know, the census, you know, they probably was 1 million, and R and P, like, some of it's like 700 more. So, we are talking about 30,000 here, you know, population, and other, you know, others that, where, so you're thinking, what are the sorts of studies, or, you know, model sets, we have something that you can do both later on, you know, so that you can.
Are you doing best practices?
We are going to look at some peers.
Yeah. So we will be doing some best practices and peer reviews that can show some of those cases. There's a lot of examples where transit has worked in a lot of different markets, for a lot of different reasons. So we can, you know, pull together some of those examples and put them in the report. But I do see it's already past eight, so I think you guys have another topic, right? Yep. But I do want to just give a shout out to the survey, which is online right now on the town's website, so it'd be great if you guys wanted to fill that out, and then also share it with family, friends, constituents, other groups that you might have. It is also a survey that requires people to make trade-offs, and choices about the kind of transit investments that are right for Mooresville. So it doesn't take a long time, but it's really useful for us to get that information.
And how long will that survey be active on the site?
Uh, I don't, yeah.
Our plan is to have it active at least through the Spring Fest time, so mid-May.
Yeah. So plenty of time. All right. Thank you guys very much. It was great to get your insights and input.
I'll come around.
Thank you very much. And when will we hear from you guys again? What's the next touch point?
So the next joint public work, joint work session will be June 24th, and will be, they'll be presenting some high-level options at that point to consider and get comments on.
Thank you both very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Taking a break, we're just going right into it. Five? Okay, um, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 8:15. Thank you all.
Okay, we're coming back into session, and we're going to go over a demonstration for the request to speak product, and this is going to be facilitated by Erin Hudson, our town clerk.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for giving me just a few minutes to spend with you all tonight. Wanted to share a software that we've located that may be of use to council. The Request to Speak software is a component of Swagit, that is actually our streaming service provider. Both the meeting chair, which is the mayor, and town council, and town clerk, will all have hardware. That's going to display any council members that have indicated that they would like to speak. Each council member, each council member will have hardware in front of them, that might be an iPhone, might be an iPad, it might be a tablet, really anything kind of can work with this application.
Be my.
I'm sorry?
You said be my.
You actually don't have to, I'm going to get to that. The mayor may speak at any point during the comment portions of the meeting, as he does not have a specific recognition tab. What does it look like? It's relatively simple, it's pretty intuitive. Minor hardware, again, is required, which we've kind of just demonstrated through what we've provided for you here tonight. We will provide and maintain that here at the town. So to Councilmember Garamella's point, you don't have to bring anything, you don't have to transport anything back and forth to home, you don't have to worry about losing it, misplacing it, we'll take care of that. There is, I'm sorry? Right. Correct. We'll, we'll provide that for you. There will be a username and login provided for each council member. We will also maintain those, nothing additional that you will have to remember. Staff will complete the login of the hardware prior to the start of the meeting, and then we will locate that hardware at your seat. So everything should be set and ready for you to have when your meeting starts. The software does ask that you indicate your presence upon arrival, simply because it's also a voting mechanism, that's not what we are using it for at this time, should that be something we decide to use in the future, we can, but simply because it does not allow us to use the feature if there's not a quorum present. Please note, that is not the official role capture of a meeting, that is still captured in the minutes of the meeting, but you do have to indicate your presence with a button that says "present" at the bottom of that app. So, with that, how do you use it? This is what the screen in front of you should look like if you are a council member accepting the mayor. So if you've got an iPad or a phone in front of you, that should be the screen that you're seeing, or something very similar. Does everybody see that?
Here.
Okay. And that, that simply means that we've just entered discussion. So again, you're going to see a blue RTS button and an orange motion button. And again, we're just going to ask if, that you disregard that motion button, only because we're not using it specifically to capture voting at this time, if we decide in the future, we can look into that. So if someone will, please press the blue RTS button. All right. So we've got a couple of those, and if the mayor will look to his screen, he'll see a couple of, should see red flashing blocks and some numbers. Okay? So we're going to come back to that as well. So if you have pressed the blue RTS button, you have now entered yourself into the RTS Request to Speak queue, and it's also telling you the number that, in the order that which you've pressed it. If by chance you've decided, mm, I don't really have comments on this, or someone's already indicated what I said, I'm going to hold my comments for later, you can always cancel your request to speak by pressing the yellow Cancel RTS button, and then your spot is just simply going to move to the next person in line.
What does that mean?
If you press, if you press the, the yellow button.
No, the next person is mine.
Oh, so if, if you pressed your button first.
Would that work?
Okay. If you pressed it first, and there was a number one that says you are the first person in the RTS queue, then if you press the yellow button, then the next person who was number two becomes number one.
So if somebody has to push that button?
They do.
Then you have to kind of talk.
Just, just in the format of this application.
You don't want.
Correct.
You didn't want.
No, I know, but let's say, on the 322, how do I know that twice, keep track of two people in front, use that to ask, or to queue you?
It's going to queue you. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So can, somebody have.
Okay, that's the cancel. And then, you know, I.
I never want that.
Right. So I was number one, and I'm finished speaking, so I hit that, I'm done. And then you're saying everybody who hits it is going to that queue up on the 3, it's number one, but tell me it's canceled then.
Yes. Yeah. If, if.
Yeah, that's the point, but not exploiting.
Once he, once the mayor recognizes you, he will cancel.
Yeah. Yes. Is, am, am, am I understanding and answering your question? I'm not certain that I am.
Yeah, was that, who's going to cancel? Do I go myself?
Oh, okay. So you're saying cancel, and I'm, I'm reading it as.
You're telling me to speak.
Sure. Sure. So, and, yeah, we're, we're going to come to that. So we're going to come to that when I'm just kind of showing what the mayor sees. No, you're fine. You're fine. Please, please feel free to ask me questions, that's certainly fine. So when the mayor, or, it's called the meeting chair in the application, so forgive me if I'm interspersing terms, when the mayor recognizes you to speak, you're notified with a red flashing, you have the floor indicator on your device. So what does the mayor see? So he sees something very similar to what he would see here in the chambers, in the meeting room. We use the one-speaker function, that simply means that we recognize one speaker at a time. Speakers, again, will appear with a blinking red square around their image, which is what the mayor will see on his screen, and they will have a number around their, their image that indicates the order that they logged in to speak. A check mark above their image indicates that they are the person who has been recognized to speak. There is no rhyme or reason to three check marks. If that is something that council would like to explore, more or fewer check marks, we can certainly look into that. They're provided as a reference, they do not serve as a limitation on the number of times anyone can speak. The mayor can clear the check marks above any speaker's names at any time with the Clear All RTS button. The mayor will simply use the Next RTS button to move to the next speaker in the queue. Once discussion for any given item has ended, the mayor will simply tap the blinking red speaker, and that will remand speaking control back to the mayor, and this also returns RTS capability to all members as well. So yes, let's please go through the process. I'm sorry?
What, you want to, or, 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 you want to get that, you know, that, how does that play?
So, so we're kind of exempted from, from the application.
The, the, if, if, and then you set up, you know, that you want me to get that, get some, and everyone who's reading the screens, you know, all that sort of, can we add, what I'm saying, can we add two more? There's no harm, that, that, on the, they really want me to do, they will get a picture, if that's possible, that you can add, I'm setting it on.
It's, it's certainly a question we could pose. I don't know that answer right off the top of my head, but we can certainly ask.
You're certain.
Yeah. We can, we can certainly ask. So if the mayor will go through anyone who has requested to speak with the Next RTS button, until there is a red flashing around someone's name, and then depress where that person, that picture is, and so that should return the RTS feature back to our speakers.
Right. But I canceled, and then I restarted, started setting out, move through. Now it's, I went through, move on, do. Move on. It's just a, yeah. Okay. And then I just turned on the main one, and I was like. And then I was on the main one. And I got told, and I got to you, and then I recognized that too. So. So what happens is, we, we, because, because, so he's the person to speak.
Yes.
And the queue was still up, so if I was like 100 or 200, whatever, he would recognize and turn on the speed.
Yes.
After we speak, then do we do anything, or does he figure that?
So he simply is moving through speakers as part of his facilitation of the meeting.
You, you, it's a little bit. It's something that I've done.
Correct.
Is that what we have to do, speakers would.
In a while.
This is really just to help you all facilitate your discussion?
For like, for a car.
Yes.
So that you can, the mayor now, so that, yeah, he can be listening, versus trying to remember who was up first.
Help teach him, make sure it's back where it needs to be.
It'll, it'll.
Back where it needs to be. Because I can't see.
Number one, they'll recognize that person to speak, and that person's done, they'll push next, and that'll go to the next person, and it will tell him who's next.
It's got to, where you want it, do we clear them?
Have they been recognized? Has he pressed the Next RTS?
No.
Okay, that's what he needs to be doing.
Erin?
Yes.
I know that Jerry has a checkbox. Is it possible to keep those checkboxes as we go around the, you know, first round, that you make sure that, you know, everybody's checkbox, people are either second or?
Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, because I don't, I know that the intention, but I'm a little bit concerned with Michael, like, unchecking himself, because that might not allow for that tracking to have everybody take a turn. So if, if, we have to work with CJ on how to use this, so that he can keep track of that first round of questions, and then he can do the deliberation, you know, for the next, you know, two or three people going back and forth. So it's important that Michael not uncheck himself, he's queued up, he wants to be in that.
So I, I can share a couple of things from our, our testing. You actually cannot uncheck yourself. So if.
But, but we can.
Cancel, right?
Cancel.
That only removes you from the queue. The.
Doesn't make, I mean, why doesn't Michael check? He unchecked me, he moved himself, but I never saw a check from Michael.
The, no, it, it's not live. This is just a screenshot I used in testing. But, but to your point, nope, that's a, it's a perfectly valid question, and to your point, Council, Mayor Pritham Scroggins-Johnson, the checks will remain until the mayor hits the Clear All RTS button. So as many times as you all go around, those checkboxes will remain, even if everyone has had three opportunities to speak, those checkboxes will remain. They do not remove themselves, the only way to remove the checkboxes is through the Clear All RTS function. Yeah.
So if we can, if more, if you want.
So I, I think what I, what I would like, I think what I shared with the mayor just really briefly before the, or during the break, was, I really wanted to just kind of showcase it to you first, get your feedback. If this is something that you feel would be of help to you, let us know if there are things that you would like to see differently in it. So I think we've heard there may be some benefit if we add either a town manager, or a town clerk, or maybe a staff additional person. We could explore that with our vendors, see if that's an option. If, if there is feedback that you have, that's what I would like to hear tonight.
So that it ends up, that would be nice.
I don't know that we have that capability, but.
I was, I hear a feeling about, you know, I did do this, um, I took your, talking about, to, to, so much, that, um, I think it's like, I think we're going to try, I think, I think it would be.
I think, I think it would be.
Well, Erin and I, we're pretty good at sharing this, Lucy, but I don't really keep the full capability, so some of this is, it's in our meeting, which is what we're doing tonight, but I don't know what else to ask you, if there's someone else, stop and do other, you know, both of you, anything. Pretty good thing, I'd like to make a motion second, but, you know, it's kind of a race. Yeah, because that is what the purpose of this is, is to request a seat, software, and there are future motion capabilities if you want to do that. That is it, there, there is nothing, that's, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, next week, we are doing all these committee appointments, right? So you can just say, this is, this, we don't have to tap, like, it's pretty much, uh, like click over.
Yeah, so this, this.
Yeah.
Those would be yes or no.
Yeah.
So we're not working on that. That's a different topic. I, I'm, you know, I don't know if there's a, is it hosted, or?
There is.
There's a pilot program, you know, of course, you try and want it to be, and, and it's, you know. Ultimately, it's, we have a lot of, um, we're, 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 we're there. So we, we made for this demo, we have to conscious to put this in place and follow the rules of the test. So there's a sort of a point for you, so you can, and then there's some anyone that you, um, put in, you figure that is. There's not a lot of other products, if you want anything that I want to show you. So there's, my, my perspective on that is, is if the best one, we've been to, I heard Erin did all of the, if you don't want this one, then it's, it's that to somehow immediately be left in line. So.
That's, sorry, my question, there's no way to say, perhaps, this doesn't, doesn't know, if you're not, you can't, you can't, you're not the one who can do that. This was actually a lot of, 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 audio.
So I'll, I'll expand just a little bit further. If we fully incorporated this with all of the software applications, we could use this for pulling our agenda in and casting votes, things of that sort, we can do that in the future. That does not replace our agenda management software, it's not an agenda management tool, it is an in-meeting assisted tool. And it does, just as Town Manager Page indicated, it does help you with meeting facilitation, with speaker request notification and ver, and, and awareness, and it does help with vote capturing. Again, it would not replace minutes of a meeting, it would be an assisted tool. So these are some things we could look at in the future. We did speak to several municipalities to see what they were doing, anything they had experienced. There is not a lot out there. Very few had anything as robust as kind of what you're seeing here. Yes.
One other question, you got features.
It's a feature we won't use.
No, no, the reason, like, the markers are getting integrated with the microphone, so it doesn't mean that.
No.
Not the microphones, or audio and video streaming.
Oh.
No.
It's, it's a swag product.
Mm-hmm.
And integrated, it probably, not completely accurate, but that's, that's your provide of this product.
I don't know what it is, with Michael.
Well, so you can kind of spoil another product, you are, you're, completely separate.
I think it'll work in the large.
So I'll just weigh in a little bit. I, I don't know how much this costs, and I'm, I don't even know if I want to ask, but it just seems, it just seems like an incredibly limited use for something that we could, the seven of us, manage ourselves. I, I, this is not something I would choose to put money into. And I don't know, if you told me it was $50, I'm not sure I would want to spend $50, and I know it's a lot more than that, so, or I'm making the huge assumption that's a lot more than that. I think, you know, as, as a council, we're, we're, we're only been together for about a year now, a little over a year, and so for councils to really get into a groove takes a little while. I would, I would prefer that we all commit to doing this ourselves, and not using a piece of software and having to pay a maintenance fee, and pay for a product and a maintenance fee for something that really is just so limited.
Would the council think that we'd use this also at, down here, during work sessions, or would this only be on the dais?
Both.
If we were to do it, okay.
Mm-hmm.
May I ask how much it does cost?
Yeah, you're, you're at roughly nine, $9,000.
I don't think we need it, but.
And I didn't use my mic, sorry.
Yeah, I think this would be an interesting thing to have, but I, it depends on how much pushback people are having on the blue cards that we're having. That seems to be working okay, although it's not as, I'm doing the best I can to recognize people in order, but it's hard to make sure that, I'm trying to be fair and keep people in order, so we can keep using the blue cards for a bit more, and I'll try to phase them out, if people feel comfortable with me just doing the best that I can. If you want to make sure that you're recognizing the order that you want to be recognized, it's blue cards or this. So it's up to you guys, if you want to sort of let me do my best and recognize as I see, we can keep doing the way we're doing.
Are, are other jurisdictions using the software in the region, or do we have any idea, or other city councils?
So there are very few using a software. The ones that are are much larger than us, and they pay, because, because software's just expensive. And a lot of them use, and, and I'm sure several of you have been to school of government classes, a lot of them use the clickers, and those software capabilities do have a large associated expense, because there's a software and a hardware component. We, we explored those as well, and they have more limitations than this at a higher price point.
I like the idea, but I think if, if we could be, I mean, I don't think we're there yet to use it for other applications. I do think that it would, just based on my observation from last year, I do think it would help Mayor Colley, just in terms of, because when we're debating back and forth, sometimes it's hard to re, turn around, and then if someone else is saying, I want to speak, whereas if the mayor had the visibility of seeing that, it could streamline the efficiency of the meeting, plus I think using technology to help us be more efficient, but I don't know whether it's worth a $9,000 investment, but I like the idea of it, though.
I understand that, you know, you're doing your best job, that you, you're trying to be fair to us, and I think, I do not believe that any one of us has even, you know, said, like, you're not being fair, like, giving everyone an equal and fair chance. So with that, it's better to go to these traditional, as much as I love technology, I think it's not cutting the amount that, to what we are really getting out of it, that's my two cents on it. Right, we can, we can continue this or something else, which is literally free, and, and, and actually I like the idea if we go away from it, because all you need is an eye action, you know, like you say, I, I want to go next.
I, I am okay with doing the more manual method, you know, with the, the cards right now. I think over time we will get more in sync and in tune with how we communicate non-verbally, and I think that's actually better for us to be able to have that ability to communicate non-verbally as well as verbally.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, and I agree that we can, thank you very much to staff for investigating this, we're going to park it for now and hopefully not need it, but we do really appreciate all the effort that went into bringing this forth and vetting all the different options and doing the research for it, so thank you very much for that, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your feedback.
Moving on to item 2C, we have Town Council Roundtable. I understand that we have some people with a couple of items, so if everyone could present one item, and then we'll go around a second time, if people, and, let's go ahead and have Town Manager Page get us started.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give an update, last month was our first time in, in the new format on a Monday. We had six items that were presented by council, and I, I just want to give you a little feedback about what I did to process those requests. So I, I prepared a, I, I developed a quick template, it, it was really patterned off of what you were providing as, as the information to share with Town Council coming into a meeting. I, I drafted what the content of the item was, what the request was, I tried to capture in a very abbreviated, high-level fashion what the various comments were, not only by the presenter of the item, but the feedback that council was providing about that request, and, and then assigned it to a staff member. If there were attachments, and there was an attachment to Councilmember Johnson's, I attached that to the item. So I assigned it to a staff member, and I also assigned it a date by which I needed to get an update from the assigned staff member about the preliminary work they have done on an item, what it's going to take for them to work on it, and an estimated time of which, a, a deliverable that I have not been providing back, that I will be able to provide back using this, would be when you might expect to see that come back around for you. Some things are obviously much quicker than other times. My goal will be to have that first update on items prior to your next roundtable, so within the, the month, there would be an update that I could provide to you as a part of the tracking and reporting that I'm going to share with you in a minute. I did not do that this time because budgets were due Friday, and so I did not think it was fair to staff to task them with something else as I was asking for their budgets. So for the items that were presented in February, I have asked for that preliminary report by Feb, April 12th, and then I will be able to provide council an update on those items at our next roundtable meeting in April. In order to manage the work, I, I left something out, I've also encouraged the staff members to not only take my synopsis of what council talked about, but to actually go listen to the audio and hear it for themselves, the, the comments that were made, so they have the full context of what council's discussion was. I also have tasked two staff members as a part of some of our restructuring of our roles, to, to help me get this work done, so that will be making sure that we're getting the information back and that we're adequately reporting and tracking. I am in the process of updating the Excel spreadsheet that, that had been how I was tracking it for you before, and you will have that for the next meeting as well, just, it, it's a follow-up on the, what are the status of all the old items. I am happy to say most of them are done, but I'll be able to tell you which ones are done and get those completed for council, and then you'll, you'll see, we'll make sure you're seeing that tracking and reporting report every month as a part of your roundtable as well. So hopefully that will help facilitate the information in between our meetings or before it would be coming back to you. And I'm happy to answer any questions about anything that I've just talked about before we actually go to the roundtable items for this month.
Thank you very much, that's great info, thank you very much for taking all those steps. Councilmember Link.
So it sounds like, Martha, thank you and your staff for the work, but, so when it comes back to us with the update, are you, what's your anticipation, then? We'll take another vote to see if it's worth time, staff's time and effort, or?
So, so let me clarify a little bit. The, the first update is actually to me, so that, that I will know how long the council or the staff member may think they need to work on it, what they, what else they might need to know, how they're going to approach it, so that I'm making sure that it's, it is being worked on behind the scenes. When it comes back to council, if it's been directed that council wants us to act on it, it will come back to you in some form or fashion, I just don't know what that might be, it would be depending on what the ask was. So let's, so the cultural program and events, the first one that Councilmember Rao introduced last time, and it was exploring new and additional opportunities. So I would, I would expect that Jerry would be talking about what's planned, how he might be considering that in the future, what the budget might be, and then we would determine if we were going to incorporate that. I'm going to, the, the fitness programming during MFC closure, that one was sort of a continuation of efforts to make sure that we're providing as many opportunities as possible, so that might be something that I would be updating in news and notes as we would add those kinds of activities. The fire station, two-second entrance, Chief Krittl may be bringing back a narrative report or summary of that for then council to continue their discussion. The town hall forum, Kathy's working on that one, and she's exploring best practices of what others do and how something like that may be structured, but that was not a decision by council to do that, it was to explore it, so council would still have to weigh in on that one. The elementary school crossing guards, that's already in work for our budget, and then the last one was the social media policy, Kathy's also working on that one, again, really exploring best practices and draft tenants of that, that council may want to consider, but that would be a policy discussion that, that council would have to come back and talk about, and in that one, I would say brief and take action on.
Those were really good updates as of that, and next time we'll get a little bit more timing on like when those things would happen, so you've already provided a lot, which is great, we appreciate that.
Thank you, yes. The next time I would come back on these, it would, it would be really when you could actually expect to see it, to talk about it again, because we would ultimately want to work those back into our roundtable. Some of those will have to come back, so we'll have to reincorporate those into the discussion when we have our roundtables.
Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, just two, two quick things. Is there some way to put this information online somewhere that we can go see it instead of, you know, reports and paper and?
Thank you, yes. One, one of the other things that, that Erin got for me as a part of this process was there is a council member access drive that has information at your ready disposal, and I plan to establish a folder that this information will be deposited in so that you could go to it at any time and look at it.
Secure drive, or do we need?
It is, it is only available to you, Erin, and now me.
I have to remember another password to get in.
I'm sorry, not secured that way. If you go in through the network, you log in with your credentials, and if we, and if we, if, if we need a quick refresher, that's easy. There's lots of stuff out there for you, your council connects, your news and notes, your rolling calendars, the closed session minutes, there's all kinds of folders out there if you're not looking at that, that, that's really accessible to you for these kinds of information.
Yeah, sounds good, so I'm just behind, but the secure link that we had years ago is no longer something.
That's correct, that disappeared with our website redesign.
And then the other thing, how, how often are we going to do these roundtables? Because we've got a big list, and I'm going to talk about something else when we go around the room, but are we, are we doing this once a month? And, and I'm, I'm getting a little concerned that there's this growing list that we just keep piling on and never finishing.
Point, well taken. We, I, I think you're probably going to be, probably more surprised than you think. We do work through them, I think we may lose sight that they were a roundtable item as it somehow gets resolved. So, so there, there's not a whole bunch of things hanging that isn't addressed in some form or fashion. To answer your first question is, we approved six Monday meetings, and each of those includes 70 minutes for roundtable discussions. It doesn't necessarily mean it all has to be new items, that would really be something council would manage themselves if you wanted to pause. That would really be something council would manage themselves if you wanted to pause. What's happened before is there's a glut, and then there's a pause as everybody sort of gets their things out. And then we were able to, I'll say, miss some. But I think that's really at our discretion as to how many are coming through the pipeline. And as we get better at determining when you're going to see them coming back, that may help answer that question.
And so at this point, it's, you know, I would advise us all to just have that on our radar because, you know, I want to see some, we've come up with some really good items here that, you know, all of us. And I'd like to see them put into, to come to fruition before we just keep piling and piling. So that, you made me feel better, but I think we all need to be mindful of that.
Well, I know you know I'm not a shrinking violet to tell you that we have too much on our plate. Some of that will be influenced if it's 10 parks and recreation items. That's different than if it's two parks and recreation items, and two communication items, and two transportation items that different people are working in them through the pipeline. We have this meeting. We have one scheduled for April. We have a Thursday budget work session that you could add a roundtable if we did not have a full three hours of budget and you wanted to do that. That'll be council discretion. We have one in June. Then we don't have anything in July or August. And then we come back again in September, October.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update on those other six. Now we're at the point where we can start this evening's. We've already used up some of the 70 minutes, but we'll see how we do. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Schlink. And if we could, if we could just do one for each person, then we'll make another round.
That we only do one tonight because it's a certain person's anniversary. No comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Rao.
In front of us, we have a, you have a map. Do I need to talk into the mic?
Yeah.
Sorry. In front of us, we have, it's just a map. I just wanted to outline, as you well know, for years I've talked about with RTP and about available land for schools. And so this is one more area. This is a big area. It's in the center there, 60, 80 acres, depending on how it can be utilized. This is, that E-50 is the far left, 40 acres, the Wake County just bought. 60, 80 acres is where the toll road connection is going to go, right there, proposed toll road. But again, I think that's up in the air. We heard last time that it's three to four years delayed. So my proposal tonight, just, this is just to orientate you to the land use. And RTP is still of the opinion that they would sell the land to Wake County Schools if that's what they wanted. Wake County Schools doesn't really look at it because it has a road connection on it. So I would propose that as a council, we maybe could help this along by sending a letter to Campo, sending a letter, same letter to Campo, Wake County Commissioners, Wake County School Board members, saying that we recommend that the higher and better use for this land for Morrisville and for Wake County could be a school. And they, conceivably, you add the two acreages together, the 40 acres and the, let's say, 60 acres. That's 100 acres. You could get a high school in there. You just have to separate some of the facilities, but. As an option, but again, we talk about it, and I'm just trying to say that all that I'm asking for is a letter saying, hey, here's this thing. If this could go away, this road, please consider this as part of a high school or a middle school.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm not sure if the road is on their plan, and we're asking them to remove it from the plan in order to free this up for a school? Is that the ask, pretty much?
Pretty much. I mean, we, again, it's just verbiage. It is, but I think it helped, would help with intent, just like what we did with the road connection, saying we didn't want it on Town Hall Drive. We only want it going to Davis.
I'm trying.
Yeah, I think the higher and better use is for a school.
No, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't, I'm not arguing that point. I'm saying you want a letter that says you don't want a 147 connection at all.
Correct. Plan for a higher and better use for all of Wake County for a school site.
You know that's a big lift, right?
I think it, I've, you know, for years I've talked to Wake County Commissioners and School Board members about it, so. And they, when I first broached these other school sites, they said, you know, those weren't going to happen, and they have. I think, I think again, it's at Campo's level. I'm just trying to say that I think if we get it out there, I think it would do a lot of good.
You just adopted a transportation plan. Why didn't you bring this up when we were going through the transportation plan?
Did, well, kind of, but again, I don't think, I'm not asking to impact the transportation plan. I'm just acting to do it because it's three or four years now it's delayed, and they cut back money. So now they're, I think this would be a good example of another good cutback.
Councilmember Rao.
Roundtable item, or? Oh, no.
No, we're discussing this. It was brought up by, yeah, we're trying to have a quick discussion. Just trying to. Is it not possible, because it was my understanding that you could have the road connection, and this could still be a school site. They just weren't interested because of the topography. They're saying that if there's going to be a road there, they cannot have a school there?
Yes. It's like we can't because the line on the map goes away. The road, they won't consider it.
So can I, so before, you think you heard one thing. I think I heard something else. Some of us think we heard something else. So before, why don't we, this is, we need some more information here. That's not what I heard. I heard what TJ heard, that they did look at this area, and they were not happy with this property. It was topography and everything else. It wasn't so much the road. But why don't we get all that information clarified? Why don't we find out from Courtney what conversations have taken place and why they have not identified this area? Because I think we're here, we think we're remembering things a little differently, some of us. Ready to make a letter? I'm not ready to agree to a letter right now here without understanding all the factors and having a little bit more information and make sure we all heard the same things and we're all on the same level field here.
Okay. I mean, it's just a letter. Again, it has, carries no weight other than, again, we're showing the public that we want. We're trying to be proactive, trying to get schools. I think this is one of the few areas I can.
Okay, so you want us to put a letter together just to show the public that we're doing something, knowing full well that it's not going to happen, and it's, that's what you just said to me, so.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Well, I'm just circling back. The purpose of the roundtable is just see if there's interest in moving forward with something. And I think if we can sort of have a default, when people will chime in, when they're in support, that will be helpful to sort of manage these. So if anyone else is in support of this as present, if you want to weigh in, Mayor Protam?
I'm not in support of this, a letter at this time. However, I think we need to monitor what's going on because NC DOT is way over budget on a lot of their projects, and the timeline of the connection has probably been pushed out as well.
I agree. If Councilmember Schlink is willing to amend his ask a little bit to have staff re-concentrate on this area and try to bring us some more information as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we might be able to get to a letter if we feel like this road connection is no longer valid. But I think right now we don't know that. And even though you feel that it doesn't carry a lot of weight, I don't think, I'm not personally comfortable putting that out there that we want it to go away personally. And I don't hear other people chiming in for a letter. Are you okay with amending a task staff to come back with some more information about where this could go forward as part of our school advocacy? Yeah, I would too. Councilmember Caramella.
I think one thing is for sure, like, all are hearing multiple stories about this land. It is important to first understand RTP stand, Campo's stand, and what our stand is, you know, before we move forward. The idea is good, but when we hear several other stories, I want to make sure that we're on the same plate. That's pretty much, you know. This area has been explored, but they did not look at the overall piece. I know that. They saw only the property touching Town Hall North. And, but this is a bigger area, and I don't know the answer. I had, so let's, I would say, get a full picture from all parties involved before we make some kind of a move. Is that?
Councilmember Johnson again?
I think if we could just get more information, and then, I mean, I'm not averse to doing a letter if we found out that the reasons were not, maybe the topography was fine, or they didn't want to do it. I would not see a problem with writing a letter. So if we could just maybe have them find out so that we can get a firm understanding of they're all on the same page. And then, and if that were the case, then I'm fine with a letter because I think we do need to show the citizens that we're doing everything we can to bring more schools to Morrisville.
Like when I say all the parties, I'm not talking about Wake County Schools right now. Like I'm talking about more of RTP and, you know, Campo and DOD, those ones, before we go to the school system. Because that's, they're already continuously looking at all pieces of land, you know? We don't have to tell them where to look at. But nevertheless, if we have something quantifiable and agreeable from our side, then obviously there's no harm in pitching for any piece of land.
So I just, to really make sure we're all, you know, on the same page, I think we all want additional land for schools. We all want a high school. We all want a middle school. So to your point, Michael, they've recently come out and said they've bought, Wake County Schools recently bought the additional acreage on the other side of Davis. So, you know, at this point, would they consider revisiting acreage on the other side of Davis and combining that for a high school? I don't know the answer to that. I think that's worthy of pursuing. I, you know, pursuing school options, I'm 100% behind. I just think before we put together a letter that eliminates a road, we better understand what that means, and I would really like to hear, you know, the details behind that and hear from Campo and everyone else. So again, to the, you know, to the whole school issue, I think we've all consistently said we're in favor of schools.
Councilmember Schlink, want to bring us home?
Well, so what I'm hearing then is I'm kind of in agreement. I just want to get the dialogue started because I'm telling you, so if you guys need more information, that means going back to Campo, which then says basically our council's looking at, for these reasons, and that's fine. Just let's get it going, because again, I've been working this a long time. And initially, everybody said, no, you can't, that won't work, and it does. That's all I'm trying to say. I think it just takes a little change on some people at Campo's level and at, but that's fine. So I guess my memo would be, it sounds like we can move forward with more information and then decide later data if we're going to write a letter, but we need more information. That's fine. Kind of like how Martha, I was asked a question to Martha about briefing, you know?
Okay, so it sounds like the ask is of staff and generally supported that continue to have staff, Courtney, whoever, who's already got her finger on the pulse, to sort of explore as presented by Councilmember Schlink whether or not that road's maybe moving away and not going to happen, and whether or not there's any possibility of combining those properties in order to make it more viable, higher, better use. I think that's a fair summary. Does staff have what they need from that one? Okay, I'd like to recognize Mayor Protam, Scroggins-Johnson for her roundtable item next, and then Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have a handout for tonight's roundtable, but I did want to share with you a growing concern that I have that a lot of our sustainability across the nation is being threatened due to the lower demand for recycling. And some cities across the United States have suspended their recycling operations because the cost has quadrupled for the services to be collected. And I am familiar with several Michigan towns that are not able to continue their recycling operations. We still have a contract in Morrisville that's good for another, I believe, two more years or a year and a half before we have to renegotiate that contract, and at which time we will have to be faced with a significant increase in the recycling program for the town of Morrisville. So this is not unique for any one city. It is simply a national demand issue. So with that in mind, we have to think as a town, since we were recently named to be the most environmentally friendly town or something, if we can no longer recycle or becomes very economically burdensome, what other things can we do in the town to promote environmental sustainability? I'll just throw in one more thing before I give you the hook. The RDU Airport Authority recently, the board approved to quarry, open more quarry land for a private business to increase their revenue streams, which would destroy natural areas right now that are part of the RDU Airport. This would take out trees. This will affect how we breathe in Morrisville and in the surrounding areas because the trees do clean the air that surrounds the airport. So there's multiple things happening. There's things locally here, and there's things nationally. So what I'd like to ask, it's very simple, is for an assessment or an inventory of the current and activities that we do for environmental sustainability within the town and what we do have. What are our assets, if you will? Example, we have two electric charging stations. We have the LED streetlights. We have a good stormwater program. This is not, this would just be not a formal assessment, like a huge amount of money, but just something that we have as an inventory that could be used primarily in the beginning as a communications piece. But over time, we could evaluate this and use it to create policy that may improve different kinds of programs, maybe solar, maybe more electric charging stations, just to help offset maybe some of the challenges we're facing with sustainability issues. So, Sadish.
I'm trying to understand your ask because you went on the recycling, and then you switched to sustaining.
Right, it's about an inventory, basically, because I think we're going to lose the recycling program. That's my point.
I'm going to say we don't know the cost yet, to before we say no or anything. That's still, she will explore about that. But your ask is not about recycling at this time right now. That's, so basically, you started with that. So second is basically talk about sustainable programs, how and what we can do. Completely different from recycling. I wanted to make sure that's the.
Recycling to me is a sustainability program that we offer as a service to our constituents. If it becomes completely unaffordable, which is potentially, not saying that we couldn't, but it is become, it will become burdensome, what other things can we do to offset, you know, and kind of keep that sustainable balance? That's my point. If we take an inventory today, we know what we have as a baseline. And then if we talk about things that are growing in cost, then, like recycling, we might be able to figure out something to counterbalance some of those negatives. out something to counterbalance some of those negative consequences.
Town manager Page, please, if you'd like to weigh in on staff's behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a topic that our MS committee has already discussed, and actually said almost exactly the same thing. They are working on developing, I don't know that they use the word inventory, but a compilation of all, of all things sort of sustainability-related that we do, in particular for educational outreach, and to assess new programs, so they're working on that. I can get an update and bring that back. And Mayor Protam Skrogan-Johnson is correct. We, and many others in Wake County, are experiencing some of the same financial pressure points with recycling that you will hear about as a part of the budget process, as well as some other things that we're also doing to address those concerns. Todd and I are also convening a meeting of all of the municipalities in Wake County that are affected, to sort of put our heads together and figure out how to see if there's other solutions. So I expect that meeting will occur in April.
Councilmember Johnson?
Before, I have one point to close it up. So, based on what you're saying, we were, I was on the Wake County Fire Commission meeting, and Durham, Durham Highway basically is doing a pilot program, which is in line with the entire Wake County. They're making one of their fire stations solar. And till recent, two years ago, the rebates were not given to nonprofits, like the towns or anything. They just started this. So many of the counties and other towns are taking advantage of it. So that is something, they, I talked to Joanne, who's the finance director for Wake County. They are programming, because that's part of their sustainability long view for the entire county, so we can get a plug into that to see what they do, that we can use it to our town.
Love it. Thank you.
So, just two quick things. So, as far as a baseline, years ago, and Michael remembered this, we did do a sustain, sustainability inventory. There was an inventory. Now, whether it's been kept up or not, I don't know, and that goes back to when Tim Goss was here. So Courtney may be able to, it may be something that probably needs to be updated, I don't know, but there's, there is information out there. And then, the other thing, you know, I sent you all that article, what was like, two weeks ago, about, about this issue, and I think what is really important, you know, they have the Rs, you know, recycle, reuse, well, what I took away, what was really important from that article, was we need to get in the mindset of refuse. You know, we're, we're a society that likes to consume and buy, and then throw away, and then consume and throw away, and so, you know, maybe there's a mind shift here of refuse, you know, refuse buying stuff, refuse buying more clothes that you just turn around and throw away. And I know we're going to be recycling clothes in this, in this latest Green Day, thank you. I was going to say Spring Days, I'm like, it's not Spring Days, but on Green Day. So anyhow, so refuse, I think. Maybe that's something else that we tie into all this, is educate folks on, and encourage them to borrow instead of buying and throwing away. And I'm as guilty of that as anybody, so, just, but I think it is something we really need to think about and address and work on for the foreseeable future.
Thank you for bringing that back to our attention, and there will obviously be budgetary impacts for the recycling part, and thank you very much, Town Manager Page, for volunteering that she'll report back on efforts for sustainability in general. Councilmember Rao, please.
This is just an idea that I want to bring back, bring before council, based on some meetings I've had during my office hours. For this evening, I'm not asking really for a head nod to move forward, just something I want to bring up to the council, and I would like to sit down with the town manager, just, I'd like to get her on board with stuff that, you know, I have ideas on. But one of the ideas that came from one or two entrepreneurs I met with just a few weeks ago, was that now that Morrisville has a strategic plan, and citizen engagement is something really important, and now that we have a CIO on board, and we have a lot of technology citizens in our town, whether there could be a place where these entrepreneurs could submit their ideas, if they have, you know, we, just this last year, we had a group of high school kids that came in and talked about where technology could fit in for some of our transit. I think Councilmember Wendell had brought them in. And from time to time, we've had, like, the Vagio of it, M-Connect, and other entrepreneurs that are developing these apps, and more of the innovation programs in Morrisville are actually companies that are coming in with these ideas. So I think just, there are programs like Innovate Durham, where they have programs where companies will submit an application online with a specific idea, and, you know, just say, we'd love to pilot this technology, and then the town would decide which ones to select. But I know that our staff has so much work overload at this time, that I don't know whether that would be the right thing. But one idea that I had, could there be a section on our website where people could submit ideas, or would it be better just for them to, you know, if you have an idea, send it to the CIO or to the town manager? What I'm trying to do is streamline, I'm seeing more of these requests coming in, and a lot of times, they come to me, and then I hand them off to Martha, so I guess, if it would be okay for council, I'd like to maybe resource a little bit more, when she does provide us the template, come back with something more formal. I just wanted to bring it up as an idea today, that, you know, a couple of citizens have asked me to.
Satish, were you looking to comment, or you have a roundtable after? Okay. Anyone else want to share thoughts about what Councilmember Rao brought forth? Mayor Protam?
I think that we have an incredible amount of talent in the town as well. I think that let our new CIO have a few months, but this idea is great, you know, and then maybe we can have that outreach effort, formalized.
Program like Innovate Morrisville, but not something that we put a lot of money and resources, but just maybe a section on our website that people could go with an idea, but there would be certain parameters that would have to meet within the goals of transportation mobility, for example. So, that's fine, I'm willing for the CIO to settle in, it's just an idea that I wanted to bring up, and I could flush it out a little bit.
Maybe I don't know enough about the hotivation, but does that not sort of meet the need?
Yeah, I think the hotivation, there are entrepreneurs that come through that program, and that could meet the need, but I just think for the town of Morrisville to have something that, I mean, in other words, an entrepreneur could come out of a hotivation, and that they have a specific idea, that they would have to go through a process to submit that to the town, so that our departments and our manager could look and say, okay, this would fit in. Because, you know, the problem is, we're trying to screen also. We don't want every business or mind coming in saying, I want to meet with Martha, I want to meet with the CIO. So this would be a very specific thing, where there are needs our department has, our town has. I'll give you an example. So, a few months ago, an entrepreneur, about a year and a half ago, I had a meeting with an entrepreneur that had developed a smart city technology for getting real-time visibility of footprints in parks through, and they're working already with Crabtree Park and other parks. And so, I got the email, and then I just forwarded it to Jerry, and Jerry thought it was very interesting, but there wasn't a need. And now something's happened where he actually thinks there could be a need for that, and I can't find, the guy emailed me, it's buried in my email somewhere. So that's a specific example where there are needs our departments have, but to have a more formal process, where they would go and actually, then the department heads would select, hey, this is a really good idea, and I'd like to pilot this. And this was a free, it wouldn't cost the town of Morrisville any money. This guy was just saying, I could put your sensors in the parks, and then you can get visibility. So as we're looking at making investments in parks, so that's just an example. I'm not talking about someone that wants to sell us vaporware, because we could, you know, but a more formal process where it would have to meet a certain litmus test, so.
I'm not sure where to go with it, other than you've, there's a path to pass things to staff at this time, and you're looking for something a little more formal, so maybe when the CIO comes on board, and they might be able to find a way to incorporate new technology ideas, bringing in, there's been talk of an IT committee, so that might be another way in the future, when the CIO is in a more robust place to make those kind of things happen. But for right now, would it be okay to just continue filtering things through the town manager, and seeing if she vets it or files it away?
I would find, be fine with that, but I would like us to consider, I look at this different than an IT committee, because I think that we have a CIO, and this would be specific innovations that are developed that would go directly in a more formal process, you know, so somebody would have to have an idea that would say, I've got an idea for parks, I've got an idea for transportation. So I would just ask the council to be open. We don't have to do anything immediate, let's let the CIO get settled in, but then I think we should look at having a formal program or something.
Right, and I didn't mean to, the IT committee would take this place of this program that you're trying to do. Mayor Protam?
I think we should turn this around, Steve. And instead of having the public come and say, I can, I can do this, I can do this, they don't know the data that we have available to us easily. This is something that the town understands, where there might be some gaps, where the, where they cannot use their current software to solve an issue or analyze data. If we give our CIO some time, he might have some ideas of what he needs, what he needs external expertise from, and that is where we're really going to get the value add. So, good ideas from the public, great, but I think the value is asking, have a speak-up, have, say, you know, we want everybody to do a certain topic, and then we would get 20 applications, and then we would pick the top two. So that might be a better way of turning it around.
Up, and, and I think that's, I could have waited.
It's good food for thought, to sort of plant that seed early. So, thank you very much for that. Satish Caramella, Councilmember Caramella.
Yeah, no, I think, just piggybacking on what he's saying, is, simple example today, what Aaron had to go through, the entire research to find if there's a product available, and all kinds of things. Like, that's one of the roundtable items I'm getting, is a different, it's similar, but coming to you, all, it could be a simple website link, hey, if you have an idea on parks, submit it, you know? It would be staff, or, you know, at a later time, that this idea could be aha moment a year from now, or two years from now, but at least that idea is given to, by a resident to a town portal. That way, they have it. And at least it's, they're aware that these things are also available, not that they don't know that it's not available, but it just gives them more choices. There's no need to reply back, but at least absorb it. That's, that could be one of the things, like, you know, could be parks and recs, could be IT, you can just, whatever departments you have, like, public works. Okay, how, what do you do this? It's just an email that gets registered, goes in, and if it's a good, you know, they'll pick it up, and if not, we already know about it, that kind of a thing.
Could I interrupt you real quick? If a resident wanted to give a suggestion to the town, I, it's been many years since I did that on the website, is there a certain email address that they would just send an idea into the town? How easy would that be? Is it information@townofmorrisville.org?
That's our general, any catch-all type of email address. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Caramella?
I didn't have today any roundtable, but since you were bringing about the roundtable, just thinking aloud, we always go top-down, you know? Is it something, you know, you want to go from down to top? The way I'm trying to see it is, if any of the staff, or any of the departments, you know, like, want to toss an idea, and for me, it's like, let the best idea fly. It doesn't have to come from us, it could come from anyone, and that way, it helps them, it gives them, you know, they feel that they're part of the town, that their ideas are getting heard, and in that way, you can, like we do in IT, like, the tips or the sports awards kind of thing, like you do recognitions anyway, if someone picks it up, okay, this idea is good, it's very helpful, then you, along with your staff, or like, department heads can come up, okay, this is a brilliant idea, you know, it's worth pursuing to bring it to us, some, that kind of a thing, because it's, we will not know day-to-day operations, but the people who work ground zero know how they can be more efficient. And we go through a CDO process, for every $1 that you spend, the returns will be $3 in efficiency. So if that kind of a model that we use for work, doesn't mean that you're using the same, but you got the idea. If that is something, you know, which will be very beneficial to the staff, that they feel like empowered, that they can do and achieve some good things.
Okay, sounds, it's my understanding the town manager is empowering staff, and taking ideas, and bringing it through the process. Is there a particular ask?
The ask is, you know, like, it's like we are giving, she can bring up monthly, okay, this is, this idea came, and I like this idea, just toss it to us, and I like, I'm sure when it comes down up, the ideas are always much better than top-down.
So, to encourage her, like, other than budget time, that if there's something that she needs, that she needs more resources for, to go ahead and ask?
Not resources, I'm not even going into resources, that's part of her, you know, that she does assessments, but it's more like, okay, a firefighter comes, hey, this town does this thing, how about, you know, how can we use this that will bring better efficiency? So, engineering guy, like, you know, went into a conference somewhere, and basically came back, okay, if we use this product, it's good. So those kind of things, that he can bring it to the thing, and it will be beneficial for us to know that, okay, this is what they got. It's just more of a status that, you know, they can screen it to get it to us.
Councilmember Johnson?
That probably happens all the time, it's just that we don't know it, so.
So maybe you're asking for Martha to share the celebratory moments of things that sort of come up through the ranks, and just share them with us about the wins, because we're all about trying to celebrate a little bit more of what we're doing well, and what we're being innovative about? Is that sort of what you're asking, steering us towards?
She does do, like, you know, this person was awarded this for those kind of things, but it's the ideas which help, it doesn't necessarily mean that has to be done right away, but I like this idea, and I want to move forward at, you know, future stage. Like, pretty much like a parking lot for us, that we are doing through our own table, something for the staff to work through the chains, to get us those kind of things, so at least we know, wow, at least that's happening.
Okay, any thoughts on that, Town Manager? Okay. Aaron Hudson, please.
Sorry, just a really brief comment. A couple of things that you all have said have just resonated a little bit with some of the work that some of your goal teams are doing, with the strategic plan that you adopted, that we've had almost a year now, we're coming up on a year. So, if you remember, council prioritized five initiatives. We've actually ticked off a couple of those here in the last couple of months. So, the work that you do, the work that staff does, really is kind of charging through those, just within the first year, and that's, that's pretty good for a strategic plan, for our first ever strategic plan. So, a little bit, I think, of what I might be hearing is citizen engagement platforms, ways of not just asking for feedback, but really kind of having some meaningful two-way conversation with citizens. So, your goal team three is actually exploring all sorts of technology platforms, what we have, what we've used in the past, what works well, what doesn't, and really kind of having some of those conversations. Kathy Jarboe, your Communications and Outreach Director, and Stephanie Smith, your PIO, and Brienne, and I apologize, I've just lost her last name, your new Community Relations Liaison, all working really closely together to see what tools are available, what's out there. I think that may get you some of what I feel like I've heard a little bit of tonight, so just wanted to throw that out there, just to bring that forward.
Thank you very much, very helpful. Is anyone? Does anyone else have any, uh, roundtable items that, who hasn't already presented one yet? Uh, Councilmember Johnson?
I just have one, I wanted to talk about the Bike Share program, and I actually talked about this back at retreat, but didn't make it a real, um, roundtable item, so, um, and it's kind of timely, because we talked about it earlier when we talked about transportation, and how, um, maybe to enhance Mooresville's transportation options, Bike Share could potentially be a part of that, anyhow, so I brought it up at the retreat, so I went back through the minutes of the retreat, and everybody can, um... I just printed out two pages of our retreat minutes that listed a whole host of items that we mentioned that we wanted to, um, discuss or, or take some action on, and some of them we've kind of talked about here tonight, too, so, um, I, this is not, you know, my Bike Share one is, is clearly a, an item, I'd, I'd like to pursue that, or at least investigate if it, um, what, what it means, and if it's, if it's worth it or not, but I also want to, um, highlight all of this, and, I mean, I think, for me, I think these are all, you know, give or take a few roundtable items, so I bring it up to say, what are we doing with this list? To my other conversation about, are, are we piling on too many things?
So, so one of the admin reports that you have coming up in April is just some retreat follow-up, now I can't answer your question specifically, but we are working on pulling together information from the questions you would have asked of department heads during the retreat, and sort of categorizing, incorporating these into how they might be fitting into strategic plans, so that report is being developed now.
My real ask tonight is to investigate a Bike Share option more than anything, but not to lose sight of this, so I appreciate those comments, thank you.
So, um, question, would that be allowing the market to create one, or would be subsidizing or just explore what options might be available and what other people are doing?
So, I've, my understanding, it, we would not subsidize it, it is, we would encourage a company to be here to help, you know, with the Bike Share program, it's not, it's not something we need to subsidize, um, beyond that, I don't know a whole lot more than that, I don't know whether we have the, um, the business here in this town to, to encourage somebody to come and, and, but I would like all of that investigated and explored and see if it's a possibility.
Because my understanding that, um, micro-mobility, including scooters, was sort of touched on, and not talking about scooters, you want to concentrate more on the Bike Share in general.
I was talking more of like, because we have such an integrated greenway system now, um, and especially once we get the Hatchet Crabtree Greenway under 54, which is right around the corner, um, the opportunity to, to ride that long stretch of greenway is, is huge, so, and of course then, you know, going back the other side, going west, too, so, no, I was talking strictly bike, not scooter, and, and strictly on our greenways, and see if that would work.
Okay, um, so is there support to have staff continue to investigate that?
I do.
Seeing some head nods? Okay, so if, uh, staff could let us know if there's any possibility of exploring that further and reporting back at, when available. So, everyone who wanted to, uh, bring up a roundtable has done so, uh, there was a motion in the very beginning to limit it to one per person, are we still feeling that that's the case, or is there, anyone has something urgent that they're feeling that they need to share tonight? Okay, seeing no one putting their hand up to do something urgent, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn unless staff or someone else has any final comments, looks like Councilmember Rao wants to weigh in. Oh, so moved, okay. Okay, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, it's 9:36, and we are adjourned, thank you very much, we have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, and it'll be led by Mayor Protam Skrogan Johnson, as I'll be out of town, thank you all very much.